I'm going to take you through a quick run-through of just the history and the overview of this project. Then when I am done, I'm going to introduce that it's my honor to introduce him. That is Mr. Ted Swallow from Jervasi Vineyards, who has headed up the private fundraising for this project. And I want everyone to hear his vision and his reasons why he got so heavily involved and invested in this project. And we also have with us tonight from MKSK, Brian Kinselman, the principal, was not able to be here. I think he is out of state or out of country. But we have Matt Mand, Tom Stevens, two of the lead members of the design team. Of course, we have Don Angus here to discuss aspects of this. And John Hyman can discuss contracting aspects of this tonight. And Mark can discuss financing aspects of it. But this is a very, very quick overview. That is, we know, of course, Centennial Plaza. This is for those who aren't totally familiar. It's our block downtown, Market Avenue, Third, Fourth, and Court, tied to a former Crestwood building which was demolished in approximately 2005. For 15 years, we've been calling this unfinished block Crestwood Block and more recently Market Square. A great deal of conversation regarding the design, funding, and programming of this public space is that our new plaza be completed and be showcased in next year's centennial celebration of the founding of the NFL in Canton. It says a new beginning in this city with the rename Centennial Plaza, and we are asking for that tonight. This is Market Square today. Centennial Plaza is being designed by MKSK Studios. I think you have previously met Brian Kinselman, who has been up here several times being principal. They are a landscape architect, urban design and planning firm, principal place of offices in Columbus, extensive, extensive experience in planning, developing public parks and public spaces throughout the island nationally. This is, and I have passed out to you, so you have a copy just in front of you. This is the full rendering of Centennial Plaza as we intend to build it. And this is a park with all infrastructure amenities, sound systems, fire fix furnishings, programmable lighting on all aspects of it, a cafe, restroom, storage area. The cafe has an Oculus. And Centennial Pavilion, the pavilion overhead, a former stage with covering large format video board, digital kiosk, Canton Sculpture sign, fog listing feature, the rotunda, which is this large item down here, which is the Hall of Fame rotunda. And then Port Avenue, Third and Fourth Streets, where many streets make its part of this project. It's just a couple of quick different views. This is the view from Fourth and Market looking through the rotunda toward the stage. This is a view, that is a closer view of the stage. Again, hovering the pavilion and the roof over the stage, we've now lowered or placed the large screen digital TV behind the stage. This is the proposed, a drawing of the proposed restaurant area, which will be all glass and very, very modern, again with restrooms and storage facilities in the back. This is the project cost estimate. We've been hoarding these costs fairly accurately and fairly tightly for the last three or four months. The side work, we're at an approximate number of $12.3 million. I say "approximate" because the work continues on this thing at a very intensive pace. MKSK, I think, has seven or eight sub vendors or contractors involved in this. Each one of them has expertise in the design of the various aspects of this. I'm not sure what happened there. Make sure I'm there. So this is, again, $12.3 million. The funding, the State of Ohio has committed $1.5 million in the 2017-2018 capital budget. That money, by the way, has to be advanced or spent by us first, and then it's reimbursed. An additional $1.0 million may be included in the 2019-2020 budget. That is yet to be developed, and that is something that gets done in probably July of this year. So that's not known yet, nor that that all will not happen, but there is a good possibility in that. Private fundraising, by community leaders, is raising about $2.5 million. Fundraising is being done in conjunction with structural equipment, Hall of Fame Museum, the Hall of Fame Museum side, which is a 501(c)(3), and that's why we're making donations payable to them, because they are then charitable tax deduction. It will serve as a recipient of fundraising this, with the assistance of Huntington Bank, who we had here tonight for other reasons. The pledges are going to be monetized, that's converting the pledges to cash. The Hall of Fame will then donate this money to the city of Canton. Canton's share of the funding is about $7.3 to $8.3 million, and that is being paid with issue 13 comprehensive plan funds. Downtown Canton is a targeted investment area, and downtown development is a focal point of the comprehensive plan. No capital money is being used, no general fund money is being used, no neighborhood money is being used. Programming has always been a very, very important topic from day one. When we started talking about this three or four years ago, the city of Canton does not have any expertise in programming or marketing, nor do we want to endeavor into this area. We have fortunately been able to reach agreement, and that is a commitment from the Board of Trustees and the Hall of Fame Museum, that they will assume programming, operations, maintenance, and marketing of the plaza for a period of 10 years. We want programming, by the way, to be an open and inclusive process, led by the Hall of Fame, but we don't necessarily want all programming there to be Hall of Fame-related. To that end, the agreement is going to provide that there will be a programming committee involving participation from the city, the Hall of Fame, the Hall of Fame Village, which is a separate and different entity. Visit Canton, very, very important. They are a very important partner in this whole thing. Arts and Stark, very, very important partner. Palace Theater, the Regional Chamber of Commerce, which of course has so much programming with regard to Hall of Fame and other activities, the property and the Canton Repository. This agreement with the Hall achieves one of our primary downtown development priorities, which is to create and maintain a strong connection between the Hall of Fame and downtown. Very, very critical to the history, to the future of downtown Canton. It's immense, both the present and the future partnership with the Hall. The project requires city council approval, which is anticipated to be received tonight. Contracts are going to be bid and authorized in May and June of 2019. Construction will commence in the first two weeks of July 2019. Completion is scheduled for August 2020, with the grand opening in September 2020, which is a NFL centennial celebration. And there are very, very, very large plans being made for that centennial celebration. We're talking about a celebration which will be much larger than the normal, very, very large Hall of Fame weekend. The completion of this project and its design, funding, and programming would not be possible with truly extraordinary leadership and commitment of five people. Mr. Ted Swallow from Jervasi, Kirk Shearing, who's helped us with state funding, Jim Porter, publisher of the repository, David Baker, president and CEO of the Hall of Fame Museum, and Danny Sanyer, CEO of the Regional Chamber of Commerce. Truly, they have been involved in this every step of the way for like the last three or four or five months. Deepest gratitude to them for their important commitment to completion of the project and to Canton's future. Look, work and play. I heard Chrissy Schulman say that tonight, when she made her acceptance speech after being appointed to the council of large position. Centennial Plaza will be a catalyst for downtown economic development. It is important for productivity to the Hall of Fame, and it will complement our innovation district. This will be a central park that everyone in Canton can and will take pride in. And we need to take pride in our city. It's long overdue. It's long overdue that we invest in our city. I think when we started talking about this, we went back and tried to identify the last time we made any large capital investments in the city. I think the last thing was Millennial Parking Deck, which was probably 2000 before that. One of the other parking decks, five years before that. And Central Plaza, which is the last time we did something of this nature, was probably in the early 1990s. So I'm talking about 20 to 30 years since this city has invested in itself against high time that we do this. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Ted Swallow, though, because he's truly been an inspiration to me throughout this whole thing, because he is an outsider to this process. He's not involved in downtown development. He does not have a store in downtown. He has one of the most successful businesses in the city of Canton and in the region and in the nation. I believe actually that he draws more people to Jervasi Vineyards than the Hall of Fame draws to itself, and they are very, very comparable. Next door, he's successful, but he brings a different perspective and a different vision to this whole thing, and it is so very, very meaningful to me, so I want all of you to hear that. Ken?
Thank you. You need to click. Okay, give me one second here. First of all, thank you for inviting me. I'm very happy to be here and excited to talk about the Centennial Plaza. And this is the probably one of the most exciting new developments in building in downtown Canton in Lake Forest over the last 20 years. And I know from my experience that this is going to solve three different things. One, it's going to be a catalyst for economic development. I'm already starting to see it. I've been out talking to people in the community, and I'm seeing a renewed interest in downtown Canton. You know, the second thing, too, is that this is going to be something that's going to attract people downtown, additional visitors, and I'll talk a little bit about that. And then the third thing for me, too, is I think this is going to help tremendously in reversing the population decline. And I'll explain to you why I think that will happen. You know, I was asked to be a participant in this about four months ago, and I said no, because at the time, I was building a new distillery. I was hiring people and training them to work there, building a new hotel and building a house at the same time. So I said no, I couldn't do it. I had too many things to do, and I just didn't have the time to do it. And so I started thinking about it, and I remember reading the report about Stark County, about the declining population, about getting poor and getting older, and I can testify to the older part. And I said, you know what? I've been hearing about this, and I've been talking about it for a couple of years, but I don't see anybody doing anything major. And I thought that this has great potential to solve quite a few of these problems. When I talk about the part that says the population decline, I think that we need to attract the millennials. We're not thinking about that segment of our population, and that's the people we have to keep here. And I think that the biggest export that this town and this community has in the county is not bearings or steel, it's our educated youth. We train them, we have school systems, I have great education, and they leave. And we have to stop that. So you have to start thinking about how they think, not about how we think, because I know I think totally different than millennials do. And I have a little bit of experience with this, because for 12 years, I was the director of the Blue Coast Drum and Jubilee Corps. Started out as a program of Canton Police Boys Club, and then grew into being a national champion. And during that time, I spent about 10 weeks every summer in a bus with 150 kids traveling around the United States. And these were 18 to 21-year-olds. And I got down only that I eked with them every day, and I slept with them. We slept in a gym for it, and we rode in a bus every day. I got to see how they think, and it's totally different than you and I. It really is. And so we have to start appealing to what they want to do, not what we want to do. And when I found out, for example, we just hired a new director of the drum corps, a 29-year-old fellow from the Dayton area. He's moving into town, and I said, look, I will help you find a place to live. I said, I got great places in Jackson Plain, and I started talking about the county places. And he said, I want to live downtown. He said, I want to live in an urban environment. And that's back to that thing with when you get into millennials. That's how they think. And you know what? 25% of the people who are 16 years of old in the state of Ohio don't get their driver's license. I don't know about you, but me, when I was 16, I took my test that day. I mean, it was a big thing for me, but not for millennials. They want to be in an urban environment. And a couple other things they want? High-speed internet. And what do we have in the innovation district? We have the highest-speed internet in the state of Ohio. They want music and art. What do we have at Arts and Stark? We have music and art. What we don't have is we don't have a park. You can't spend all your time in your one-bedroom apartment. They want to go to the park, they want to meet other people, they want to exercise, walk their dog, they want to have a beer. It should be one, by the way. But they want to do that. They want to get out and socialize in their neighborhood, and this is one thing they'll do. So I'm convinced that this is going to make a difference. You know, I had an opportunity a month ago. I was invited to go to the Youth Leadership Academy at graduation. I'm not sure if you all know what that is, but that was started by the Chamber. And what they did is they went to, they took sophomores, and they went to every school system in the county, and they asked the schools to appoint one boy and one girl. These are sophomores in high school. They had leadership qualities that they could attend this program, and the schools had to let them off one day a month. And for six months, these kids, young people, they had this program, and they went around the community. They went to the courthouse, they went to the city, they went to the hospital, they went to the ticketing company. They went all over, went to a farm, and they experienced it. At their banquet and at their awards, I was there. Would you believe this? About 50 kids. 75% of them said they had never been in downtown Canton. That's the problem. That's what we have to change. They don't have that feeling that you have, that you grew up here, and you used to shop here, you used to go to the movie theater here, and you used to go, you know, to walk downtown. They have not experienced that. And if we don't change that by giving them a reason to go downtown, it's never going to happen. So that's one big point that I said, I got to see if I can help out. The other thing for me was economic development. You know, people talk about it and all that. The best economic development we can have is tourism. And I'm, you know, Jervasi is a prime example of that. In the last five years, we've had 1.1 million people visit us. And 40% of those drove more than 50 miles to be there. And you know what's great about that? They come and give you their money, and they go home. You don't build a hospital, you don't build a school. It is the best kind of economic development. And what we're talking about here is having a plaza downtown that's going to bring people here. Not only people from outside the community, but it's going to rejuvenate the people who live here to say, I want to go downtown. And it's a great, great thing. I just can't see how we can miss this opportunity. The other thing that hit home for me was the idea that the 100th anniversary of the NFL is next year. I mean, I'd love to be able to build a new whatever, restaurant, hotel, you name it, and have it be on national TV and every publication, whether news, radio, you name it. That's what we're going to have in 2020. The biggest party in this town, in this community, in this whole county scene is going to be next year. And we can back into that through the Hall of Fame, through the Centennial Plaza. We can be a part of it. We'll be what's on TV. And people will see that, and they'll say, golly, Canton must be really moving. Let's go down and see what's going on. Another part of this for me, and before I put my name or said I would be involved, was that how do you run this? Because I'm familiar with every time there's a new school issue, building a new building. You know, it takes a couple of years to get through. You build a building, and you know what happens two years later? You have to come back to get the money to operate. It always happens. And so a big thing for me was the programming. You know, what's made Jervasi successful is that we have a program every week. We have something every week. It could be as simple as a chocolate wine tasting, or it could be a festival with 6,000 people. But we need to have a programmer. We need to have somebody who's going to program this thing correctly. And so the other thing was maintenance. You know, this thing's not going to run itself free. And so this way, we went to the Hall of Fame, got their board of directors to agree for 10 years, they would be responsible for the programming, and they would also be responsible for the maintenance. That's probably about a $2.5 million investment in the project right there for 10 years. And it will make a big difference. I don't know about you, but I can't wait to be here at this festival, the Centennial Plaza, and the Michigan-Ohio State game, having a tailgate party with 5,000 people there on the big screen. What a great time that's going to be. So obviously, this is an exciting program. I'm excited about it. I think this is the perfect thing for the city, and it's already starting to generate enthusiasm for downtown. People talk about the empty buildings. That's not a bad thing, because you can buy them pretty cheap and do something really good with them. Okay? So let me just kind of go through a little bit of there. If you want to do these things, you've got to be bold. You know, I heard this thing about phase one, phase two, phase three. You know, if you don't do phase three, you might as well throw away your money on phase two, because phase three is the sizzle. You've got to have the sizzle. The sizzle makes it work. And if I had built Jervasi an Italian restaurant in a strip mall, you know what it'd be today? An Italian restaurant in a strip mall. We had to put the sizzle to it. Or, best way I can describe this is, my wife's a great baker, and I love apple pie. Bake an apple pie, and we'll put the apple to it. That's what doing phase one and two is, and not doing phase three. Phase three puts it over the top. And so you've got to have a bold vision. It has to be something that's going to be transformative. It's going to change things. You're not going to do it the same way you've been doing it for the last couple of years. Over here, right here, I don't know if any of you have been to Chicago lately? That's Millennium Park in Chicago, built by the city. And I had the opportunity, a couple of weeks ago, I was talking to a group of about 20 local business people, and I asked, how many have been to Chicago? About 14, 15 raised their hand recently. And I said, when you were there, what did you do? And I'd say three, four of them said, I went to Millennium Park. You know what's at Millennium Park? The Beak. That's a big sculpture, a big stainless steel sculpture. And 3.5 million people a year go to that park to see that beak. We have our beak. And it's a big part we're talking about. Obviously, what's what happened at Public Square in Cleveland? You know, it's been a big change. We have to reinvest, and we have to reinvigorate with some other activities. Stop doing things the way you've been doing it. If you want to grow, you've got to think bigger. You can't be thinking small. Got to be dramatic. This is our beak, by the way. I bet you that everybody that goes there will have their picture taken. This is 75 feet tall, poly-stainless steel with LED lights on it. Breathe the 75 feet, because it's going to be taller than the building next to it to say it's big. That'll be our beak. That's what will be one of the attractions. It's got to be memorable. You don't want to go someplace one time. You want to go one time and enjoy it so much, you come the second time and the third time. And that's part of the programming. That's part of what it is. That's part of the ambiance that you create there. You know, we're talking about the big idea, let's attract the millennials. Let's keep them here, let's bring them here, let's reverse the population thing. Let's give those people, that segment, something that they need, and we have not been doing it for them. But let's create a transformative project that will attract tourists, but it's also going to bring locals home. You know, I consider Canton downtown my downtown. And I'm in the Jackson Township, but it's my downtown. You know, and that's what we want. We want everybody to be proud and say, look what we have in downtown Canton. It's different. It's, you have to come here. You know, we say, why, we have a can't-miss destination in the city. Why are we doing it now? It's 100th anniversary. You leverage this project against the NFL's 100th anniversary. What a great way to launch it. And it will generate economic development. It's already starting to trigger excitement from downtown. We all know what it is. You know, it's expanding from the one acre into picking up Third, Fourth, and Court. It's now two acres. Great size for a park like this. The obvious, you've seen it, this is kind of the oval here. You know, we're talking, you know, here's Market, it's Third Street, Fourth Street incorporating that, and Court into it. We're going to talk a little bit about the thing. That's the picture there, looking from the northeast corner. Obviously, here, we have the iconic rotunda right here. Again, since I told you about that. That also could be a stage area there. You have this, I'm going to show you pictures of it. This is phenomenal. The architects have knocked themselves out on this. This is going to win major awards in just design. Obviously, back here, we have the little restaurant area. And this is also, this is going to be the restrooms, it's going to be the audiovisuals, storage, et cetera. Over here is the park area. That's a great place to go get a beer, but I prefer wine again. And then here is Canton, there's a misty park here for the kids. It really is a great look. You look out from the other, oops, I'm sorry. This is from the other corner. You enter here, and you can see there's an iconic sign here of Canton. This is the fire pits and places to sit out. Beautiful lighting. Lighting's a big part of this whole project. Look at that. That is amazing. You know, that's the rotunda part to go, not the rotunda part, but that's the canopy part that goes around it. And if you look right here, too, you'll see here, that's the big video board. This is the stage area here, it's covered. Lighting, sound effects, so if you have an event there, it's going to sound good, it's going to look good, and people will want to put things on there. Just another picture of that, in a way, if you've done it. You can see there, there's the iconic, the video board. Getting into the stage, you can see there's elevation changes. I can't see. If you look at this, there's... And right here, there's about a six-foot change from here to here. And in this area, the infield, it rises six feet to the back. So everybody has a good seat. If you have an event there, you're going to have a great seat, no matter where you sit. And here's something else. You look right here, these video boards, there's A-Dub around. It's another looking from the other side. But as you enter, there's a Canton sign here. This is similar to Cleveland, you sing Cleveland rock and roll. If you look at that, there's a assembly, there's a football. Here's the park over here, the dining area. The misty park is here. But these boards, there are A-Dub around the perimeter. And these are information centers. I have one of these, or two of them, Jervasi right now. You go there and say, gee, I'm hungry. Touch the board, up pops restaurants. Oh, I like Asian food. Touch that, up pops basil. Oh, what's their menu? Here's their menu. What time do they open? You know, things like that, advertising, promotions, what's going on in Canton? What do the events happen this week? That type of thing. They're going to be outstanding. And you know, there they are, and it shows them. These are also lighting effects. But this place at night is going to look better than it does during the day. The lighting effects that's going to be on here is going to be extraordinary. And these are part of it right here. These are those video boards that will be part of the lighting. And you can see here, there's actually an application where you can see what it looks like. Football Hall of Fame, put all the pictures of people on it. Put when the events are going to be. You know, whatever can be done with that. The lighting I mentioned has got to be special. That full canopy is all lit with LED lights, and it's going to be all programmed. You can have a light show every night at dusk. And here's the Oculus here. You know, that's going to be shining out of the top, so if you're up in some other place and you look, you'll be able to see. What is that light? Let's drive to it. And again, lighting up, you know, the rotunda here. All special lighting, special effects. And you can see some of the things you can be doing with it. There. There, the Oculus, you know, this was actually a picture here of John Lennon. This one here is going to be inside, and you walk under it, et cetera, around it. It's going to be great. And this is the little cafeteria area, there will be the restrooms and all that. It's a great design. I have to say that the people at MKSK have done a fabulous design of this. And I've heard before, somebody said, well, you know, they've been doing this like the fourth design. I don't know any building I built that didn't take about four times to get it right. You never build the first thing you put on the table. You put ideas on the table, then you investigate to see if it's a good idea, and then you refine it. And maybe you do it two times or three times. Everything I've ever built has been about four times before we got the right drawings to build it. These guys have done a great job. If you haven't been downtown Columbus to see what they've done down there? Spectacular. So thank you. This is a great project. It's what Canton needs right now, and it will solve a multitude of problems. Any questions for me? I'm kind of excited, in case you can't tell. Thank you very much. Appreciate the time.
Yeah, any other questions we'll answer during the committee meeting.
Ted, I just want to thank, I want to thank you for everything you're doing. I just want to thank you for your investment in our committee.
Thank you. It's really turned out to be a really good effort. So again, if you got to do it, it can't be average. You have to do it over the top. This is a chance for Canton to hopefully to talk about it. Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, we're going to go into our committees. Before we do that, let's welcome council-at-large, Chrissy Schulman. Okay, that is, thank you, you can go over here. Okay, we're going to go into our finance committee.
Actually, I called finance to order the finance and downtown development committee at 5:50 when the presentation started. Ordinance number 15, an ordinance changing the name of Market Square to Centennial Plaza, authorizing the mayor or director of public service to enter into any and all contracts. Amendments with MKSK and necessary for the design, construction, oversight, advertise, receive bids, award, and enter into any and all construction contracts needed for all phases of the Centennial Plaza, parentheses, Market Square. phases of the Centennial Plaza, parentheses, Market Square. Project retroactively authorized any and all action taken prior to the completion of all contracts, contract amendments resulting from this ordinance and paying all and any moral obligations related to the same. Authorizing the mayor or director of public service to accept any and all outside of funding and/or gifts related to the Centennial Plaza project. Authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Professional Football Hall of Fame Museum for Programming, ETC, amending appropriation ordinance number 50 slash 2019, and declaring the same to be an emergency. Questions, concerns? Okay, I have one huge concern. First off, as many of you know, I will not, nor could I even consider supporting this due to the fact that my constituents firmly believe that this is an absurd amount of money for two acres of property. Although I did see the need for something down here, but although that's irrelevant, that is my personal opinion. Um, I had met with the administration regarding the appropriation amounts. Okay, the amount originally appropriated was $5.5 million. The new appropriation amount is, I don't wanna use exact numbers here. The new appropriation amount is $7,400,000 and some change. Total comes out to $12,900,000. The actual budget for the project is $12.3 million. There's a $600,000 discrepancy there. When asked the administration what this was for, the mayor was very honest with me. He did not want to come back and ask council for more money later. So we're basically depleting this fund and moving all the money into this project. That's great. I respect his honesty. However, that's not how we were supposed to operate. You ask for money, we give you an amount. You have, we've been provided a budget. Now, I know we have a line item in here of a million dollars in contingency money. That should cover anything above and beyond. If this project requires more money, okay, being a legislative authority, the administration should come back and ask for us to make that appropriation. We cannot, as a body, give money that is not being appropriated for a specific thing. It's being appropriated for the specific project, but we're not being told where and what it's being spent on. That is my opinion.
Can you clarify that, please?
Yes, Mayor?
Mr. Chairman.
John Edmoremark.
John Edmore?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, members of council, you are correct, we are asking for more money than what the project is calling for. But one thing you are not correct on is the amount of money available to the Comprehensive Plan Fund, which is $14.7 million, almost $14.8 million in 2019. We started the year with $6.5 million appropriated. We have an additional availability to appropriate $8.1 million. We're only asking for $7.4 at this point. So even though we're asking for a few extra dollars, we still will have $700, almost $800,000 available for future projects that we're not appropriating for 2019.
Okay. Member Schmuppler?
Sorry, I'll defer to the state service. Mr. Chairman, members of council, one other point to make about the project dollar amount, and I guess how we always bid public projects. The additional funds, whether you have a contingency built into the project or not, whenever we go out to bid, you have an engineer's estimate. Under Ohio law, we're only allowed to award a bid in an amount up to 10% over the engineer's estimate. So that doesn't even cover the 10%. So we would not intend to do that. So I guess from a strictly bidding standpoint, whether it be a water line replacement, a roof replacement, any, anything that we would typically do, there's always a little bit of wiggle room in there. When we talk about coming back to council, what we mean there is if you have a 12, let's, for example, let's say the engineer's estimate ends up being a final of $12.35 million. The bids come in at $12.5. The funds are there so that we can make the award and move through the project without having to come back to council for a eight-week summer session. And that is not outside the normal scope of what we would normal do, normally do for a project. As it pertains to appropriation of funds within the org, from a contracting and bidding standpoint, just because the funds are appropriated doesn't mean we can spend them. For example, everyone knows that we have the council requirement thresholds of $25,000, informal resolution, $50,000, public bid and ordinance. So from that standpoint, even if you appropriate every dime in the Comprehensive Plan Fund, or the Neighborhood Fund, or any fund, we still have that relationship with council that, from a contractual standpoint, does guide that. So in terms of, is this different than anything else that we would normally do from an appropriation or bidding standpoint? No, absolutely not. So that's, I think, the point with that.
Okay, I beg to differ with that, because you said that you couldn't spend this money, which yes, you can, because it is actually being appropriated for this project. So we're putting a price tag on this project of $12,900,000 in essence. Okay, we're not showing the $600,000. Okay, which I would have, I would sleep easier if the $600,000 was in the 10% contingency, which would put your contingency overall well above 10%, which would fall into what you just said.
The, the reality is, from a bidding standpoint, we have to put a number in the bid.
Correct.
And everyone knows how volatile markets can be. We typically do a good job with engineer's estimates, but things do happen. So you have the contingency built in the bid. That said, even with that built within the bid, and you can see this with any water, water project, we do any engineering project, any sewer project, there's always a certain amount of contingency or wiggle room in any project estimate. That said, from an award standpoint, we still have to have the funds available to make the award. So, so can we spend the money on the project? The answer is yes, but only if the bid comes in for that amount.
You sure as hell wiggle a lot more than we do in my industry. All right, any other questions?
I'd just like to make a couple of statements. When I came here a long, long time ago, a long time, it was a ghost town, folks. And, you know, I love, I don't post too much on Facebook, but I love to get on there. Do you remember when? It's nice to bring out nostalgia of what we used to have. But you have to take into consideration, who's going to spur this along? Is it going to be private investors that come in and do this, or is it going to be a combination of both? How are we gonna do this? But yeah, folks, I remember when I went to the Candy Bowl downtown. I remember when I went to Dick's Arcade Market downtown. And yeah, I remember when I went to a movie downtown, and so on, and so on, and so on. And the question was, with issue 13, were we going to take some bold moves? And were we going to invest in downtown? In the neighborhoods? Both. Well, it wasn't my choice for this comprehensive plan, but everybody else in here voted for it. And now I'm 100% with them. The majority did, Frank.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I'm 100% with them now. Now we need the bold steps. Now we need the bold moves if we're going to make this. Are we gonna take the plan and throw it on the shelf and say, "Oh, this costs too much, we better not do it"? In other cities, they don't do that. Whether it's, you go see the beak in Chicago, or Central Park, or some other whatever, people do things to bring people to their community. It's time. Are we gonna do this? Are we gonna sit here and wring our hands? And I understand about the contingency. Well, some of you remember, we dug up Market Avenue, there were no water pipes under Market Avenue. It was water running through clay. And then they come back here and they want us to hurry something through, to get it done. You know what, folks? Let's just pass this now. Get it done the right way. Keep the plan, keep what we said we were gonna do for issue 13 for a change, and not go back on our word. And let's vote this through tonight, and watch something become of what we're doing here. I don't want this to be a city where all we do is say, "Oh, we're gonna go tax $3 million in streets." We don't gotta have, you know, we don't have any reason to bring anybody else down here. We've got a partnership with the Hall of Fame. Everybody's crying, "We're not doing it." The Hall of Fame's out there. Nobody's doing this downtown. This is our living room, folks. You wanna do something in our living room, we've gotta make this happen. We, here.
Okay, anybody else? Right?
There's a major difference between investing money and spending money. Investment will give you a return on your dollars. This is an investment in our community that will, in fact, then be generated and come forth through the future, and it can then spend. And if you do not invest your money and you only spend it, you have nothing left. And you can cite the perfect example of East Cleveland, Ohio, who spent all their money and can't even put fuel on their fire trucks, because they never invested in their community. This is an investment in our community. I've been downtown for over 20 years. I've seen it come a long way. And I'm really impressed with the direction we're going. And I think this comprehensive plan is one of the best things that's happened in this city. We need to follow it, we need to invest in it, and we need to look towards our future. And I really want to support this piece of legislation so strongly. It works.
Governor Mario?
So I've talked about this a decent amount, being, as Mr. Swallow mentioned. One of the reasons why I wanted to get involved, I had a lot of friends that liked this area very much. Mr. Swallow used to talk about that. These are the kind of things that they have moved for. They, my friends have moved to Cleveland, they've moved to Baltimore. They live next to things like this. And the city's been, for a very long time, as the mayor highlighted, has not invested in these projects. My friends who no longer live here have heard about this, bringing, and this makes them excited. It makes them excited to see this when it's done. My friend in Baltimore made a comment, and maybe he needs to start looking for jobs back here. My age group, remember Chester, he's a big believer in this. Our age group desires this type of living. They desire these amenities. The comprehensive plan outlines this, as Mr. Schmupfer said very clearly. We're going to attract young people back here. We have to build the things that young people want. And this is something that will work. And the comprehensive plan highlighted that. My wife and I were in Columbus a couple of weeks ago for a, for a wedding. And in Columbus, you can see, there's an attention to detail. There are these amenities that you see, and you understand why there are so many people there. So this isn't something that is unproven. Cities do this, it's successful. And when we do this, I believe 100% that this will be a successful thing in the renovating, or downtown renovating of our city. So I am incredibly excited about this, and thank you, Mr. Swallow, for your interest, your support. Jervasi is a beautiful place, it's a great asset for this community, and this is, in that city, I know this is gonna be a great asset for downtown.
All right. We will, I've got a lot to go. I really do. So could you please briefly, Member Ferguson, I've got five other.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. But I just.
And also, I think nation have, I think this is your war.
I just wanna say that I've spoken to a number of homeowners association, my board, and first, some of the people didn't understand, but I think they do understand now. A great thing, the mayor, worked with the mayor before, the commission's office. I admire Ted Swallow, I've known him for over 30 years. The five people you mentioned, Denny and Kurt Shearing and Mr. Porter, these people would not put their stamp or approval on something they didn't feel was coming from theirself. I admire every one of them. I, I'm truly excited about this. And again, once we spoke to the homeowners association and told them exactly what was going on, where this money was coming from, they understood and they appreciated. So thank you, Ted, and Jim, and Denny, and the mayor. I admire the work you're doing. And I, I know, I know Tom, never put his stamp or approval on this, but he didn't think this would work. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would just like to applaud you guys as well, just for, you know, the hard work that you put in thus far. And also, this is in Ward, too, downtown, but this affects all the wards, the whole city. This is our neighborhood. And with this, you know, getting done and no money coming from the neighborhood funds, you know, and the investors coming in from outside of the city, like Mr. Swallow said, he lives in Jackson, but downtown is his neighborhood, you know? So I approve of this, and I'm just, you know, glad to be a part of it.
6:37, it concludes Finance and Downtown Development.